I call the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the month of April 2025 to order. The board members that are sitting in the cases tonight is Member Steven Leanes, Member Monique Screenberry, Fire Chief Brian Nadelli, Member James Sweeney, and Member Kenneth Galligan, myself who is Chair. Our zoning enforcement officer, the building commissioner clerk to the zoning board, Mr. James Plouffe. Our recording secretary tonight is Monica Fregazzo, and our deputy's recording secretary is Lily Godiva. Before we get started, I would ask that if anybody has a cellphone or electronic device, either shut it off, put it on silence, so it doesn't interfere with the meeting. If you need to use the phone for any reason, please take your conversation out into the corridor. If there is conversations going on out in the corridor, I would appreciate if somebody would shut the door. I will tell you that tonight's meeting is being audio recorded and televised. It's being televised by Brockton Community Cable TV. It is live tonight, and it will be repeated numerous times throughout the next couple of weeks. Prior to the start of tonight's hearing, there is an opportunity for anyone to withdraw from tonight's hearing without prejudice prior to the start of the hearing. Is there anyone that wants to withdraw tonight? Seeing none, we will continue on. We have no withdrawals from this side, and we have 10 cases tonight. The way the hearing will commence is I will call the case, the petitioner or whoever's going to represent the petitioner will come up to the podium, introduce yourself to the board, give your name to the secretary, and present your case. When you have completed your testimony, I will then ask the board members if they have any questions relative to the testimony that was just given. When they complete their questions from the presenter, I will close that portion of the hearing, and I will now open it up for public discussion. I'll first ask, is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Then I will ask if there is anyone that wants to speak in opposition. I will ask if there's any elected official in the room that wants to be heard on the issue. And lastly, I will ask if there are any, is there anyone in the room that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given? Following that, I will close the public discussion. Then I will open it up for board deliberation. This is the time when the five members of the board will deliberate based upon the testimony that has been given. It is not open at that point to public discussion. You will hear one of the board members make a motion to grant, and if that is seconded, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. In order for a petition to pass, if there are five affirmative votes, the petition will be granted. If there are four in the affirmative, one in the negative, it will be granted. Anything less than that will be denied. So if the vote is three in favor, two against, the petition will be denied. The clerk will then tell me what the vote is. I will then announce the vote, and I will let you know whether or not the petition has been granted. All right. Did I leave anything out? We're good?
We're good.
All right. The first case tonight is petition number 2519, the petition of Matthew R. Shannon, 37 Whiting Street, Hingham, Mass., seeking relief for a variance from Section 2710, Table 2, and Section 2732 to convert an existing structure on the property to a single-family residential dwelling in a C5 zone located at 149 Mill Street. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Matt Shannon, and I have submitted an application for a variance for 149 Mill Street, which is a single-family home located in the C5 commercial district where single-family homes are not allowed, single-family homes are not in allowed use. This property is part of a transaction for me to acquire Timeless Antiques, which is located at 12, 1208 Belmont Street, and this is basically the adjacent parcel, and it's actually part of their parking lot. So 149 Mill Street is a single-family home, which up until about 2005, when Rob Cohen and Gary Epstein acquired the property, was lived in by the owners of 1208 Belmont Street and 149 Mill Street. After 2005, it was used for a commercial real estate office for a bit of time, and for the past couple of years has just sat vacant as they were trying to sell the property. The house is on a 16,000, approximately 16,000 square foot lot. The lot conforms dimensionally and area-wise to what is required in the C5 district. It abuts Shields Ave., which is mostly single-family homes, and I have, if it's allowed, I have some photos of the house if you'd want to take a look at those.
Well, Nadelli?
Just some visuals of the house.
Sure, you can give them to the clerk.
Thank you. So there's a photo of the house, there's an aerial view, there's, oh, thank you. An aerial view of 1208 Belmont Street and 149 Mill Street, and there's also an engineering plan, which I submitted along with the application, but here's a smaller version of Timeless Antiques shown in orange, and 149 Mill Street shown in blue, and finally on the last page is a floor plan of the house. So thank you for taking the time to review this application, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You are asking for a variance to allow a residence in a C5. Do you, or can you show the board a hardship as to why this should be allowed? Why should we allow this to go back to a single-family house?
Well, the house is not, it's not ADA accessible. It's not really set up for a commercial use, and there's really not much else that can be done with it as of, as of right now. It doesn't really, any of the allowed uses in C5 don't really go with the way the property is set up.
So this dwelling was built to be a house?
Correct. It's basically a single-family cape, and the floor plan, it's essentially, yeah, it's a three-family cape, it has a kitchen, it's, it was basically just a house that was used as an office for a period of time, and before that, it was lived in by the people that owned 149 Mill Street and 1208 Belmont.
Yeah, Mr. Jeff, I could, I'm familiar with this property. I've closed a few sales in this building, actually, or this house. You had mentioned it's for the building behind, you were going to acquire the building behind.
Correct.
So you were changing this back. Is the use going to change from what it is now from the building behind? So if you convert this back to a single-family, would the uses clash? What, are you intending to use the timeless antiques under the current uses?
Yes, I continue to, I am planning on continuing timeless antiques as a jewelry business, just as they've been doing that. That's my background, I'm a jeweler, and I would like to use 149 Mill Street, which is a separate property, as a residential dwelling.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How many parking spaces will you provide for this single-family dwelling?
Well, it has its own driveway. You can park approximately six cars there.
Six?
Yeah.
Sir, when was this house built?
Around 1920.
Okay, so this is pre-1967?
Yes.
And it was used as a single-family home for many years, then transitioned into an office?
Around circa 2005.
Everybody good? Okay, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there any elected official in the room that wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. That concludes the public discussion. I will now open it up for discussion among the board members. Board members.
I mean, this is a single-family house, in my opinion.
Yeah, I've been in there myself, too, and it was kind of odd that it was a commercial building, but it's clearly a house, so.
And the houses that are right down the street from it, so it's kind of, it's not like it's detrimental to the neighborhood, I would say. You know, it's unfortunately, he's caught in this trap, I hate to say, but that's kind of what it is. It's kind of an odd placement because of the way Mill Street, Belmont Street, and Pearl Street all come together there.
Actually, if you look at the zoning map, it's a convoluted corridor where all kinds of stuff comes.
Yes, very strange. So, I mean, I don't, it's not going to deter from the neighborhood, it's not going to deter from the business, it's not going to deter from anything that I can see just being down there, so.
There's nothing physical about it that defines it, you know, outside of a single-family use, so.
Motion to grant?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to grant. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Leanes?
Yes.
Chief Nadelli?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Screenberry?
Yes.
Chair Galligan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, that's five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
The vote is five in the affirmative, none in the negative, the petition is granted.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Do you want your pictures back?
No, that's fine.
All right, the next petition is 2520, petition of James C. Dusette, 260 Torrey Street, Brockton, Mass. for a variance, seeking relief from Section 279 to construct a single-family home with a side setback less than 15 feet from one side in an R1C zone located at 260 Torrey Street.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Dusette. I reside at 260 Torrey Street. This project is a project in which the existing structure on the parcel is demolished and a new structure is built. The property is zoned as R1C. The hardship that I face is that the new structure is a ranch on a monolithic slab. It is just over 700 square feet, so the footprint of the building is a little bit larger than the current, and we're five feet over on the westerly side. However, the current structure is also over the 15-foot setback, just over five feet, and so in this process, we're actually giving back approximately six inches.
So I looked at, I looked at the pictures, and you can actually see that pretty clearly of where the house will, where the house did sit, where the new house will sit.
Yes, sir.
And I think you're, you're, you're building a very modernistic-looking house from what it looks like, correct?
Correct, yes. It is a mid-century modern design. The original design emanates from Edward Ludwig. He was a German architect. He designed it for the 1958 World's Fair.
So is there anything else you could tell us on a hardship on this lot?
Well, not on the hardship, but in terms of privacy for the neighbors on the westerly side, that the windows in the home are claristory, meaning that they meet with the roof line. The height of the ceiling is approximately eight and a half feet high. The windows are essentially basement windows, so that is to say, if I'm standing in my home and looking west, I won't be able to make eye contact with the neighbors who are on the westerly side. And there's also bushes, both in their yard and my yard, that would also provide an additional level of privacy for both they and myself.
And that's where, that's where the footage is short, right, on that westerly side?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
And you said it's less in violation of the side setback than previously?
Yes, approximately six inches less.
The setback on Rockland Avenue, which would be the side of the house, we have a section in our zoning that allows that to be less than the required setback if the houses on the street are kind of in line, which they were, they were built turn of the century, they're all close to the street. So this would not be different than the other houses that are on that same side of So the house that's here will be torn down, and this will be a brand-new house?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Setback from the front and the rear is fine, it's just the two sides.
Correct, the westerly side, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Everybody's good? I'm going to close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor?
My name is Steve Burns. I live at 250 Torrey Street, right next door to Jim, and I'm in favor of this.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearings. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearings. Is there any elected official that wants to be heard on the issue? Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Phil Griffin, I'm the Ward Three City Counselor. This property is in fact in Ward One. Tom Minocello could not be here tonight. He wanted me to relay his feeling that he's all in favor of this project. I've seen the property myself, I'm in favor, and I don't think it's any detriment to the neighborhood at all. Jim is a dedicated city worker, and I'd rather have the house rebuilt to really give some more tax to the city, so I encourage you all to vote in favor of it. Thank you very much, board members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a letter that has come in from City Council Winthor-Farwell. He says, "Please record my support for this petition." He has received no calls from constituents opposing this request. The new home will blend into the current areas. So there's a letter from another counselor. Any other elected official that wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given tonight? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. I'll now open it up for discussion among the board members.
I, I think it'll just increase property values, not that, like, that's the way we decide things here, but I think, you know, Mr. Dusette has shown that he wants to make his property nice, and I think when you look at the bigger picture and what he's looking to do for the neighborhood as a whole, I think is important to take into perspective, especially, too, when you're not seeing, and just looking at the, at the, at the documents, I think it was very clear that he is, he's giving back six inches.
And everything else on, on that side of Torrey Street between Rockland Ave. and Rockford is all the same violation, too? I mean, everything's pretty close to the same west side setbacks.
It's a reasonable request. Motion to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded to grant. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Leanes?
Yes.
Chief Nadelli?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Screenberry?
Yes.
Chair Galligan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, that's five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
The vote is five in the affirmative, none in the negative, the petition is granted. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Next petition is 2521, the petition of Kyle Guarini, 66 Spring Street, Foxborough, Mass. for a variance, seeking relief from Section 279 to construct an addition for a three-season room in an R1C zone located at 47 Don D. Road.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kyle Guarini. I'm representing Karen Haynes of 47 Don D. We are proposing to put a three-season room on the back of the house. The, the current setback for the, this property is 30 feet. We are looking for about a foot and a half, 18 inches extra, so it would be 28 and a half feet off the property line, would be the back wall of the three-season structure. The current house is a one-floor ranch, so the roof line at the end would, would only be about eight feet in height. Everything else would abide by the current setbacks and on the sides of the property as well.
All right, you're requesting a variance, and when you request a variance, you need to demonstrate somewhat of a hardship. What is unique about this situation?
The, the space that we want to create, well, that's currently there, it just, it won't, wouldn't be big enough for, you know, tables and chairs for the three-season room, so we just, we needed some extra room for, for just some, you know, exterior space out there. Because right, right now, currently, would be about nine and a half feet of interior space, which would be a little tight on the back, the back room.
Is there any other place on the house where this could be located, or does it need to go where you proposed to put it?
Yeah, it's going off the back of the house, and there's an existing door on the back. The, the sides of the property, the setbacks wouldn't, wouldn't work, especially on the right side, there's a, there's a garage, the left side, the, it's too tight to the property line on that side.
So one of the things that we can look at is the location of the foundation, which you can't move the house, obviously. All right, is there any other questions from the board, or any questions from the board?
Is that going to be on the same footprint where that patio is in the back, that concrete pad?
Yeah, so someone had done some construction there and installed a patio, I think, last year of, I think it's like a 12-inch concrete slab, so that it's, it would stay within that footprint.
Okay.
Because she was using that space as just an outdoor, outdoor room, and she really liked the size of that, so.
Are you board all set?
Yes.
Everybody's good? Okay, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearings. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearings. Is there any elected official in the room that wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearings. Is there anyone that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given? Seeing none, that will conclude the public discussion. I will close that portion of the hearing and now open it up for discussion among the board members. Board members.
I think it's a reasonable request. It's not going to harm the neighborhood, it's not detrimental in any way. Folks just want to use their property the way they purchased it, to be able, able to add a nice little room off the back that they can spend time with their family, I think is very reasonable for what, you know, drive by there today, it's a very well-maintained house, it looks like they just want to.
I would, I would agree. I would also, just a point of information, our new ADU law, what's the setback on that anyways, if it, if it was converted to living space? Maybe a good question for our building inspector.
Building inspector.
All ADUs require, are required to meet the same setbacks as the primary structure, if they are attached, and if they're, if they're detached, kind of the same requirements, but then you have to be 10 feet away from the house.
So you could get closer anyways if you detached it, essentially making a lanai-type structure, or a total, excuse me, total living structure?
Total living, if it was separated, this is, this is attached.
Right.
If it was, it's attached, needs to meet the same setbacks as the primary structure.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So if this were, it was an ADU and it was attached, you'd need the 30 feet?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Well, obviously, the foundation of the house makes, makes part of the hardship here that you can't move the house and.
Agreed.
Motion to grant?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to grant. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Leanes?
Yes.
Chief Nadelli?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Screenberry?
Yes.
Chair Galligan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, that's five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
The vote is five in the affirmative, none in the negative, the petition is granted. Good luck. Next petition is 2522, the petition of Sign Design, 170 Liberty Street, Brockton, Mass. for a special permit, seeking relief from Section 2765 and 2773 to erect an EMC pylon sign in a C2 zone located at 70 Westgate Drive.
Hello, I'm Wiley Knight. This is Marie Mercer. We're representing Sign Design, and we're here on behalf of our client, Dr. Patrick Assouin, who owns a business at 70 Westgate Drive. This is our second meeting here. The first time we were denied because the EMC was too big. First, we're proposing a pylon sign that seemed to be of no issue the first go-around, and then the second sign is an electronic message center to go on the side of the building facing the parking lot, which could also be seen from Route 27. In our new proposal, we give two options, one a little bit smaller than the option before, one considerably smaller from our first presentation. In the meantime, since our last meeting, we went to the planning board and received our resounding approval from the planning board, and in the new proposal, we included a study done by Texas A&M in 2012 with their civil engineering department, where it proves that electronic signage doesn't do, do much at all to the safety of, of vehicles, passersby, anything like that. There's no considerable change in vehicular crashes from before electronic message centers were installed to after, and included in that proposal is also the vendor requirements from our, our vendor Watchfire, who, they show that these signs are adjustable, we can kind of do the transitions anyway, there won't be any transitions, and we can change the intervals from 20 seconds, 30 seconds, a minute, 10 seconds, whatever you guys want between images.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yep.
So on the planning board, it was determined by the planning board that their major change was their flexibility for the duration of messages and when they would be shown, so I just kind of wanted to get the, this board up to speed on what the planning board.
I didn't catch that. What was it again?
So we were in favor on the planning board in their major change or significant change would be their flexibility to the timing of the messages, because the board had determined that the traffic was the major concern, and that their flexibility for how, how frequent the messages would be was a significant enough change to be before us tonight.
Can I just, I just want to clarify what you hear before us for tonight, because you mentioned a bunch of different options, and those were the past times you were here before us. Right now, tonight, all as we're looking at is that one pylon sign, correct?
No, and the electronic message center on the side of the building as well. Should be on the next couple pages.
But that's, I don't think that's what you asked for.
I had exactly the same question.
Yeah, but it doesn't.
I'm very disappointed that there was no brief that came with this to explain what you're actually looking for. I thought what we were looking for was the pylon sign, but what I'm hearing tonight is we want a pylon sign plus the LED sign on the side of the building. Is that correct?
Correct.
The, just so you understand, your application does not, I see your pictures, I saw your pictures before, and that's why I was asking, because then you brought it up again. It does not state in your application that you're asking for the wall signs, it only asks that you're asking for the pylon sign on the application itself. There's just pictures of the side wall sign, I didn't know maybe if they were left in your presentation from before when it was denied.
We had a different coworker that we would, we deal with that had filled this out.
Oh.
She's not here this evening, she's been out sick from work, so we're just going off of what she had sent down.
So I think, and I defer to the chair, but I think the, the question tonight, then, is, are we, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chair, but we would be voting on the pylon sign and not anything else, correct?
Well, when I looked at this, I thought we were looking at a three-sided pylon sign, and then obviously, it's another whole section here on the one that's on the building, so as I said. So, as I said, it is quite confusing what we're actually looking to vote on.
I apologize for the, hi, my name is Patrick, oh, sorry.
Yeah, please speak into the mic. Identify yourself again.
Hi, my name is Patrick, Patrick Assouin, I'm the dentist, the orthodontist, actually.
Oh, the dentist?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're coming back the second time around, it's the exact, it's the exact, you know, two sign that we were presenting tonight, that we did present last time, there might have been a deficiency in the application, I apologize for that. But last time we were here, we had the pylon sign and the EMC sign, and the, the feedback that we got was that the EMC was too big, and so, with the recommendation to go to the other board, the planning board, which we did, and when we presented to the planning board, we presented them smaller EMC signs, two smaller versions, and they wanted to make sure that the transition would be quick, which, you know, we could make it seem very, you know, very quick, there's different options, and, and, and that the time would be long enough, whether it was five or 10 or 15 seconds, would be fine with that. And I think that Wiley presented a study that states that, that the trends, you know, there could be like almost no transition, it goes very fast, and we put also things that related to the community that we've actually mentioned last time, with the committee of Brockton. So, so we're coming back with the same two signs, I apologize if the, if, and maybe we have to present it again, but it's the two signs that we came in the first time, which is a pylon and the, and the EMC, but this time, EMC is a smaller version.
What does EMC stand for?
Electronic Messaging System, or Center, yeah.
So it is on the application, EMC, but there's no, that doesn't say what it, Electronic Messaging System, Center, I might have thought that was the, the pylon sign that's giving me messages.
Yes.
It doesn't, there's no explanation on the application as to what that is?
Yeah, sorry about that. So, yeah, so the Electronic Messaging Center, it's like a, a big, you know, a series of, you know, small rectangular screens that they put next to each other, that, that shoots like, like, you know, a big TV basically, so to speak, and the, then the pylon sign that, that is going to be in the parking lot, basically, and in a situation where we would, you know, the N-Store electric, basically, would be fine with us repositioning those in the, in, in the, you know, in the ground, basically. So that's what we looked at. So they gave us clearance, because I think that last time, there was a question about that, right Wiley?
There's another sign that you have pictured...
Which will be taken down.
The big one that's over the building?
That is correct. So the picture of that...
And that was, that was the conversation in the first time you folks came to us, correct?
Yeah, we were showing the two signs, plus this sign that you're mentioning, which is like a T-sign, that will be coming down.
Okay.
Yes.
I think just for future, for applications, they got to spell things out. I mean, I'm not in the sign industry, so, you know what I'm saying, like, I don't know what an EMC is, and then there's no, I'm thinking that's part of the pylon sign, you know what I mean? I could talk fire guy stuff to you all day, and you're not going to know what that is, you know what I'm saying? So...
I agree. All right, just for some clarification, the advertisement for this petition specifically talks about the pylon sign. It does not talk about the sign that is proposed that we're hearing tonight on the side of the building.
Chief, if I may?
Yeah.
He did put an acronym for what that sign is, in, in description, that's the EMC, chief was just mentioning.
Well, it might be an EMC, but for me, I got to know where that EMC sign is going.
Right.
I would have been extremely helpful if, in the petition, it said they're looking for two signs. One is a sign attached to the side of the building, and the other one is a freestanding pylon sign in the parking lot. So when I got this information, I was kind of confused as to what we're actually looking at, and there's nothing in here that says that they have amended the size of the sign on the building. You're telling us tonight you made it smaller than what it was originally? Go to the microphone.
When we came in front of you about, I think in November, I remember, in November, the EMC, the EMC which is the Electronic Messaging Center that's attached to the side of the building, the EMC was bigger, and you all have expressed that it was too big, and, you know, you recommended that we go to the planning board with, and so we went to the planning board with different options, with smaller options, two smaller options than the initial one that was presented to you. And, yeah, so that's, and the planning board approved, or was okay with what we presented to them.
Okay, I just want you to understand that as one board member, I'm confused until tonight, that you are looking for two signs and not one. It seems everything hinged on this pylon sign that is freestanding. Now, you're telling us that the sign that you originally proposed on the side of the building was larger than the one that you're showing us tonight. It would have been very helpful to show us what the original one was and what you are showing us tonight. Aside from that, this pylon sign that is freestanding, I think there's a variance involved here, in addition to a special permit, simply because the zoning allows a sign to be no more than between 25 and 30 feet in height. You're asking for a sign that is 35 feet to the top, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the height of the sign exceeds what is allowed under zoning. Secondly, our zoning talks about a two-sided sign, and what you're proposing here is a three-sided sign. So you cannot get a three-sided sign by right. That is going to, you're going to have to ask for a variance for that sign, and you're going to have to explain the whole situation relative to that sign. Okay? The sign that you're proposing on the pylon is 15 feet wide, and it's 24 feet high. Am I correct on that?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that, in my math, that's an area of 360 square feet. Our zoning allows a maximum of 65 square feet. This is huge compared to what is allowed under zoning. So again, if you're going to go above zoning, that's going to require a variance. So there's a lot asking here, and I just want to comment also that when you look at this sign in relation to the utility poles that are on Westgate Drive, those utility poles usually are about 35 feet high, 40 tops. So to put this in perspective, the top of the sign would be as high as the utility poles on Westgate Drive. This is a huge sign, in my perspective. When I ride through Westgate Drive, I don't see any signs in the mall up there that would come close to this size of sign. So it's just an observation that I'm making, that this is a large sign. So you're asking for 35 feet in height, you're telling us that you've got a 10-foot setback, and in the last time you were here, is, has this pylon sign been moved from where it originally was, is still the same spot?
There's no, which pylon's that?
No, we didn't change the location of where we're installing this, because it's going in, in the parking lot.
Right.
One of the concerns I had the last time you were here was this pylon sign was very close to Route 27, Reynolds Highway, and as you make the turn from Pleasant Street to come up Reynolds Highway, this sign is going to be right directly in front of you, right where the traffic lights are.
So this triangle, now, that triangular sign has been pushed a little bit to the, to the middle of the, the apex of the parking lot?
And the original one was closer to the highway?
And the original one was closer to the sidewalk?
Gotcha. But you're still, you're showing us a 10-foot setback from the city layout, so you're probably 20 feet back, 15 feet at least from the street.
Right, so we moved it more to the center of the parking lot, like away from the sidewalk, so that triangle, and, and the reason why it's so big is because, and I think last time, we explained, and I thought we had a pass on that, because really, the problematic sign last time was the EMC, the Electronic Messaging Center, but this sign, and through the variance, as you said, this sign needs to be visible for the people coming on the, on Reynolds Memorial, and because there's a valley goes down, that's why it has to be, you know, fairly high before the, the pylon sign starts.
Is the pylon sign going to also be an EMC sign?
No.
How is it going to be lighted?
Internally.
Internal lighting?
Yeah.
So the EMC is strictly the big sign that's on the side of the building?
That is right, yeah.
Is there any particular reason that you can explain to us why the sign has to be 35 feet high?
As I said earlier, as far as, as far as the height, which is, we have it at 131 inches before the pylon starts, so that it's visible, because we have to move it away from the sidewalk so much, and you have that, that small valley that goes down, the side had to be erected fairly high so that it could be, it could be seen from Memorial, the, the Reynolds Memorial, as well as, you know, this side or the other side, because it, it's not, it's not like the bowling alley next door where it's kind of on the sidewalk, almost, right, there's no poles on the side, on the other side, the poles are on the, on this side of the street, and so we had to move it to the, we had to move it, right now, on the picture, it shows that it's in the corner, actually, the relocation of this, of this would not be where the, where the white car is, if that's what you see, it's going to be more in the middle of where that, the middle of the apex of that triangle. So, you know, if we're looking at, if you have that, if you have these pictures in front of you, right there, so it's going to be more here.
Well, the picture that you show us, it's much further than 10 feet away from the property line. This is the picture I got right here, same one you got.
Right.
Certainly appears that the base of that sign is much more than 10 feet from, or we'll say 15 feet away from the black top of the street.
So it's going to be here.
So you don't need any relief from setback?
Right, so the setback, we're, we're actually, we're going further, further inward from where the, the minimum setback is.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Like, you're obviously big into your advertisement, do many people just say, oh, there's a dentist, I'm going to stop in? Like, like, I guess that's my thing, I, I know it's a crazy question, but I'm just sitting here looking at this, like, you drive by a lot of dentist's offices, they have minimal signs. I guess, you're obviously trying to promote your business to the people driving on Reynolds Memorial. Is that, is that your idea, or like, I'm just, out of curiosity, it has nothing to do with this, but I'm just curious in my own right?
So within, within that business, within that, that big center, we have two different, we have two different businesses within that. I'm an orthodontist, and there's also Dr. Paul, and so we're advertising, this is a 10,000 square foot building, more or less, so it's fairly big, and so what we're doing is that we're co-sharing the space in two sections, which is, if, so it's more than like one business, right? So that's why if you see that, you'll see children and family and orthodontics, and you'll see Dr. Paul, who does more adult dentistry. So we have to think of it as two businesses, and yes, if we can have, if we can have better signage, then that's going to be better for business. I mean, that, that's why.
I just think it's a big electric bill, that's all. I'm just looking at this, and I'm like, I, if I, I go to the dentist because of a referral, I don't go, huh, like I'm getting my haircut that day, I'm going to stop in at the dentist, you know what I mean? And I don't mean that, I'm just saying, it's just kind of very big advertisement, I've never seen big advertisement like that for a doctor's office, a dentist's office, something.
Yeah, I mean, we do, we do a lot of services there, we do kids and orthodontics and adult, and so, and we're big into the community, this is a big staff, there's over 20 staff members, so it's almost, I won't say it's a community health center, but it's a big, you know, it's a big office.
All right, so there's two things here that you've got to address tonight, and that is the request for a variance for the relief from the height of the sign, and you've described a hardship of it being set down in a depression, which makes it such that you have to be higher than normal. Now can you address the reason why you need a three-sided sign?
So, yes, great question. So that you could see it from Memorial, because it was important for me that we see it from the Memorial Reynolds, you know, Highway, as well as, as well as whether you're coming from the Westgate, you know, mall behind, Best Buy, let's say, or whether you're coming, you're passing five guys on the right side and you're going in, so by having it triangular, it would, I mean, would I take two-sided? Yeah, but by having it triangular, you're showing a face to the people that are driving up and down Memorial, and, and the people that are coming from the, from the mall, and the people that are passing five guys on the right, so you'll be able to address all three angles, and that, that's why I mean.
So the hardship is your visibility?
Yeah.
If this were to be granted, and this pylon sign was to be lighted, the intensity of the lighting would be consistent, you can't change the intensity of it.
That is correct.
Any other questions from board members? I think we're going to have to, or I will make a decision that, based upon what has been advertised here, what we will be voting on tonight is the pylon sign. We will not be considering the sign on the side of the building, because it was not requested in the application that we address that sign only, or together with the two of them. So what we will be voting on tonight is the pylon sign that we have just got through discussing. All right, board members, we all set? Everybody good? Close that portion of the hearing, is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing, anyone here that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing, is there any elected official that wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing, is there anyone that has any question relative to the testimony that has been given? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing, that concludes the public discussion. I'll now open it up for discussion among the board members. Board members.
Well, I would make a reference to Memorial, Reynolds Memorial Highway with the major sign, I think that's got to be taller than what the request is in front of us. I, I think the triangular piece of it makes sense considering the lot and the traffic. I would also, I think would be, well, since we're not counting, I'll leave the, the EMC part out of it, but I, I think that's what I've got, and I think this is another entrance to the mall where a smaller sign might not benefit them, but this size, considering it's over zoning, it does seem appropriate for a major entrance to a major business, or probably one of our major, our biggest business districts, so.
I don't really have anything else, I'll go with the questions I asked.
Same here.
My concern is the physical size of the sign. It's 15 feet across, it's 24 feet high, this is one huge sign. If this were to be granted, I think what we heard from the petitioner is the current freestanding sign on the backside of the building, which abuts Reynolds Highway, was going to be removed. I think that's what we heard. So what they're here tonight for is the pylon sign, and they were hoping to get some action on the sign on the building, but the sign on the building, we will not hear tonight, we'll strictly hear the pylon sign. So I guess my, my concern is this is a huge sign. And there are, well, you heard the request for variance, you heard what you had for hardship, and also, this sign cannot be lighted later than 11 o'clock at night, particularly where it's a business that's not open all night, so there's going to be a time limit on when this sign can be lighted, you're aware of that?
Yes, sir.
Motion to grant. Motion to grant.
Second?
Motion to grant with the stipulation that the current freestanding sign at the rear of the building will be removed. We agree with that?
Yes.
Yes.
And they agree to that also. All right, motions are made. Second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Delany?
Yes.
Chief Nadelli?
Yes.
Ms. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Greenberry?
Yes.
Chair Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Chair, that's four in the affirmative, one in the negative.
Four in the affirmative, one in the negative, the petition is granted.
Thank you.
Does anybody here know that that is which is the draw-by sign?
I don't know.
I don't want to turn over the sign.
She's going to do.
All right, the next petition is 2523, the petition of Keen Real Estate Solutions
Incorporated, 33 Fairmount Street, Dorchester, Mass., seeking to overturn a buildable lot determination, and in the alternative, seeking relief from Section 27-9 and 27-12 for a variance to build a single-family home in an I-1C zone located at Plot 1 Bank Street. The property is located between 6 Bank Street and 18 Bank Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Attorney Jim Burke, attorney at law with offices at 48 North Pearl Street in Brockton. I have the pleasure of representing Wayne Miller. And Amanda Langer is here with JDE Engineering, and we're going to make a presentation about this specific parcel. What we're here for, and what was provided in the application, was a request to overturn the decision of the building inspector in terms of the buildability of the Zero Bank Street parcel, and also a request for, in the alternative, a variance. We're going to waive the request for a variance and take it off the table, because it was put on there solely for the purpose of the possibility that maybe an accommodation could be made within a butter which would have required relief that would have identified as a variance, and that's not going to happen. So we're not going to proceed with an issue or request for a variance. It's strictly a question of the appropriateness of Section 27, Section 12 of the ordinance, which grandfathers buildable lots that are from a lot of record that exist prior to 1967 in a recordable plan. The specifics of this lot, and the history of this specific property is that the two lots in question were laid out in 1895. So they obviously were a plan that was recorded and of record prior to 1967. One of the owners of the property determined in 1927 that he was going to subject the parcel to the land court for registration. As everyone on this board knows, that you have recorded land at the Registry of Deeds, and you have registered land out of the land court, which specifically issues a legal decree, a judgment, which identifies and creates the parcel. And in doing so, they have to have a land court plan that's approved. So the specific boundaries of Zero Bank Street are set and sealed. They were determined by decree from the land court. And Amanda and her firm came out, and they confirmed that. They set forth some stakes and markers. In fact, I had the markers set forth for an accommodation to Representative Dubois, who lives in the house next door. The 1927 property, fast forward, had a decree, and under the decisions in the land court, which have specifically dealt with Section 27-12 on three different occasions, I happened to represent the city in two of them. One I won, one I lost. The dispositive case, as it relates to this specific set of facts, and each one of the facts under 27-12 are usually fact-controlling, was the Correa case. And the Correa case basically set down from fundamental purposes that, provided that the ordinance, which is meant to be more forgiving than 40A, more liberal than 40A, to allow, which is the zoning act, to allow the buildability of a lot if it meets certain requirements, and they are, as we said, a lot of record that existed on a plan prior to 67, and in fact, that it has at least 50 feet of frontage, that it has at least 5,000 square feet of area, that it has the availability of one parking spot, that the side setbacks are no less than six feet. That gives you, and one other provision, provided that there is not a vacant lot adjacent. Correa explained that, there's been some real confusion under 27-12. Here you have 18 Bank Street with a house, been there for 100 years. You have a raw lot of land. That raw lot of land had a garage, and still has a garage attached to it. What Correa says, and the land court says, is when you look for the issue of, what do you mean by a vacant parcel? It means that there aren't two vacant parcels in the pair, because if there were, they would merge, and you would have to use them both for the purposes of buildability. Here, there isn't a vacant parcel because there's a house. They have our lot of land. So it meets the requirement of 27-12 as it relates to the issue of buildable property, because it does not have that added requirement that there be a vacant lot adjacent to it in a common ownership. So, we submitted a request for determination from the building department. I've submitted it, I know you people are very thorough in what you do, and I attempted to brief it as thoroughly as I could. Clearly in my mind, there's absolutely no question that this lot is a buildable lot under 27-12 and the requirements of Correa. In fact, Correa even talked about the issue that was the deniability from the building department. Building department, unlike some of the cases, did not say you didn't have a lot of record. They concluded, yes, you did have a lot of record. What it said was, we deny it because it has a garage on it, and that makes it non-buildable under 27-12. Correa specifically talked about that in identifying that when you have structures on the land, it does not, if you have the true reading of 27-12, it doesn't say anything about the structures. Basically, the intent, Correa said, was if there's a restriction, it could only mean it couldn't be another habitable structure on the vacant lot. And that doesn't exist here, because in order to be habitable under our zoning ordinance, it's got to have cooking, it's got to have sanitary, and it's got to have sleeping quarters. The garage does not. So there is absolutely no question in my mind that this meets the requirements of 27-12 and the Correa case. Also, since the Correa case came down, it went to the appeals court for a determination. The appeals court issued a decision upholding the land court judge. The result of that means, unlike some of the cases that you have before you, this becomes precedent under our law. It's not an issue that one judge could determine differently. It's been established as a precedent in terms of the legal determination of the law. It's already been appealed and met the boundaries that were required of an appeal. There's also another determination under our law, which was that you have issue preclusion, which basically means you can't go and refight something that's already been decided by a court of final determination. If it's the same set of facts, you can't keep relitigating the same thing over and over, and that would be the issue here. There is absolutely no question that the garage that's there does not become a restriction on 27-12 that would prevent it from being buildable lot. Why? Not because I say so, because the appeals court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts says so. And it has been determined, and it is precedent. So, anything else that we're talking about today, if there are objections from any of the butters, don't relate to zoning issues, don't relate to water, don't relate to where the house should go, it doesn't relate to where the driveway should go, it doesn't relate to how many trees should be there. This is a very narrow issue before the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that issue is, and it's not a question of support your local sheriff, these are complicated issues that have been determined differently under different sets of facts, but these set of facts are real clear. They take a pathway, they take a roadmark, and they come to one conclusion, that this is a buildable lot, and that's the determination you need to make. So I'm going to let Amanda go ahead and identify the plan, and be more than happy to try and answer any specific questions that you have. And I refer again to the materials we submitted, if you have any questions for specifics. Amanda?
Good evening.
The microphone. Please take the microphone.
Of course.
Amanda, who do you represent?
Amanda Langer with JDE Civil.
Got it.
So we have right here the existing 18 Banks dwelling, and this is the subject parcel that we're here about, Zero Bank Street. And this, you can see just barely the building envelope. So as Attorney Burke said, by right, it should be six feet away from the interior lot lines. The house we have shown proposed is actually seven feet away from the lot lines on either side, just to give that extra space. Additionally, it's supposed to be 30 feet from the front and the rear, and we are giving 31 feet on each side. There's an existing driveway now that accesses the existing garage that will be removed. It's not in good condition whatsoever. We intend to utilize that existing curb cut and put the driveway right in that same spot, so you'll have room for at least two vehicles. There is gas service already there. The owner may decide to relocate the gas service. There's existing utilities in the street, so that would be able to service that. And I've already spoke with engineering and DPW in regards to putting in a driveway for the 18 Banks that exist now.
And I think that's it.
At least from our side for now.
So can, I just want to understand correctly, you're just asking to look at the building inspector's decision?
Yes.
And if granted, that we overturn that?
You do.
You do not need the variance, because it's pre-1967?
Do not need a variance, and we're withdrawing anything related to the variance. It's not on the table for discussion.
And you're basing this off of Correa versus the onus, but also the appeal that came after that?
It makes it precedent.
Understood, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
That's a say, that becomes the law.
And for clarification, the setbacks on six feet on each side were the setbacks that were in effect when this lot became in existence?
Oh, well, it also is the same under our section of the ordinance. That's the minimum requirement.
Now, if we were developing a new lot, it would be 15 feet.
Correct.
Where this is an existing lot, that you say is an existing lot, it would only be six feet, correct?
Yes.
I'll just ask the building inspector, is the statement that we heard correct, that the reason that you denied this is specifically because of the garage being on the property?
Yes, the intent of the person that owned these lots were to use both the properties together as one property and build the garage on there. It is part of our ordinance is that you cannot have an accessory structure without a primary structure. So the intent, when you build an accessory structure on a property, is to have that combined with the principal structure on the other, on the section of the property. So that is correct.
Okay, and we have prior cases that differ somewhat from that, because they reference the Brockton zoning to be more lenient than 40A.
Correct.
Board members, any questions? Everybody good? Yeah, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Please give your name to the clerk.
Thanks for having me. My name is Jarson Alivon, 70 Bank Street.
What number?
70, 70.
70?
Yep.
Thank you. Any particular reason why you're in favor? Anything you want to say?
For a couple of reasons. One, we have a housing crisis in Massachusetts that needs to be addressed, and also I would love to see a house there then, instead of that garbage garage that is there. And also, because it's half a miles from the train station. If you put the house there, people can just walk to the train station, and I think if we built a house, it's better than not built. And also, I want the board members to remember that a previous project was here, it was classified as determined to the neighborhood. And if the previous project was determined as, if it was determined that way, what is the reason why this one would be approved? So that's it.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Michelle Dubois, I live at 6 Bank Street. Right there, sorry. I dropped a bunch of pictures where it showed that the owner cut down a bunch of my trees, but I guess that will be taken up in a different purpose, because it is staked out, and it clearly shows that he cut down five of my trees with really little and no respect for my property, which really just seems to be the way this whole interaction is going. So it's just unfortunate. So I am here as a homeowner, but I am also, I just happen to be a state representative. And prior to that, I was a city councillor for 10 years. I was elected in 2005, and it looks like this Correa case that is being referenced, if I'm looking at this right, was decided in 2004, and that the appeals was in 2005. And so, from 2005 to 2015, I was a city councillor, and I came here many, 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 many evenings, where the building inspector made the determination that lots were not buildable because there were garages, and because there were swimming pools, and if I remember correctly, because there were big garden patches. And if you look back in the record, from 2005 to 2015, when I was a city councillor, you will see that the Zoning Board of Appeals upheld the building inspector's determination on those, and many times, the proponent or the person that wanted to build never even came here, and those were upheld. So I'm here tonight saying that we should uphold the building inspector's determination like we did between 2005 and 2015, and just completely respectfully caution the Zoning Board of Appeals, that if you were to overturn the building inspector's determination, you would find yourself inundated with all those cases from 2005 to 2015, where the building inspector's determination was upheld, and there are lots that people weren't able to build on. I know that the variance was withdrawn. I know that the variance was withdrawn, and I think that's wonderful, because he can come back and get a variance, or request a variance. I mean, where this house is located is so far set back that it literally is going to be lording over my backyard. So, I mean, a variance to put it in line with 18, which is, I think, it's like an old design, where I think the house is off the street by like 10 feet. So if this house had gotten a variance and was placed 10 feet off the property, like 18, it wouldn't be lording over my backyard. So I'm, I'm so thankful that the Realtor, who owns the investor that owns this property, withdrew the variance, because that allows him to come back and ask for a variance with the house set back only 10 feet, and not in the middle of his lot. It's just, the way this is set up right now, this is going to be a significant disadvantage to my property, and I understand that he has property rights, but I think that I have property rights too. And just as a resident and a taxpayer, I think that if we've shown the same respect to every other homeowner that's come here and has asked for this type of a buildable lot determination, and they were deemed that their lot was not buildable, why all of a sudden is my, because it's next to my house, somehow this should be deemed a buildable lot, and our, our building inspector's determination should be overturned? So I'm asking you to uphold the building inspector's determination that it's not a buildable lot, which means that the investor would have to come back and ask for a variance with an appropriate placed house, and not in the middle of the lot. And the reason that I'm asking you to uphold the building inspector's determination is, one, because I'm a homeowner and I live next to it, and this would be a huge impact on me. But, two, as an elected official, I've seen the building inspector make the same exact determination between 2005 and 2015, all after this law that's being cited here tonight was determined. So does that mean every single determination between 2005 and 2015 was wrong, and they all need to be overturned? And you're going to be inundated with more cases like this? I mean, just, this is not just, oh, it's Michelle Dubois' property, so too bad for her. It has, you know, it does have everything to do with my property, but it has to do with, are we going to uphold the building inspector's determination that he has made between 2005 and 2015, no matter who the building inspector was that I've seen? Or are we going to just overturn them all right now, tonight, with this one buildable lot? So I just want to just say it's more than just this one decision that you're making tonight. This is a decision about every single lot that's similar to this, that's been denied as buildable lot. And this laws, that, this lawsuit that he keeps quoting, I think was about, like, I don't know, I think it was about ponds and stuff. I think that it was like gardens and ponds, but, I mean, I'm not the lawyer, and I'm sure Attorney Burke will be able to explain it, and will explain it to you. But it isn't just about me, it's about every single determination that's been made. So thank you so much. I ask you to uphold the building inspector's determination. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laureen Jack. I live at 17 Albert Street, which is this lot right here. I live directly behind the Bank Street property in question. I'm concerned, my property sits considerably higher than this property on Bank Street, and my concern is with heavy equipment, whatever's involved in, in building, I'm concerned the compromise of a retaining wall that I have between my property and the property on Bank Street. So I would like to, requesting that the building inspector's determination be upheld. And I also have questions, but I may have to save this for the owner, but nothing is being mentioned about the existing house at Bank Street, which is in severe disrepair. So I'm concerned between the work that would be involved with the plot and the house at Bank Street. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, could I just add one more thing? So I bought this house, 2006, 2007, and the woman who owned this house, her name was Edna Ducey. She had owned it for decades and decades and decades. She was, she was blind and deaf, well, she was deaf, but not blind. And so most of my communications were written down, and I've had many conversations with her through the years. And she always told me that that was one lot, and it was never going to be built on, and, you know, don't worry about it. She also told me I own three feet in from my fence, and that is not what's marked out by the engineer. I've called five different engineers to get a plot, plan, and everyone says they're too busy to come out and do it for me. But I did bring the city's picture of the plot, and you can see that Edna's car that's here actually, like, my, their driveway is in my plot, my land, which is what Edna always told me, but that is not what the engineers' stakes show. So at some point, when I can get a land surveyor to actually come out and survey my land, maybe, everyone keeps telling me that the engineer's stakes are accurate, because engineers are always accurate, but what Edna's always told me before she died, and what the city's lines show, are different. So I do plan on getting a land surveyor out there at some point. I've called five different land surveyors that were all too busy to come out. So, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to impugn anyone's integrity, it's just, just, just an inconsistency. So I'm just going to hand this in.
I'll pass it down. All right, is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing that I'll close that portion of the hearing, is there any elected official in the room that wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing that I'll close that portion of the hearing, is there anyone that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given tonight? Seeing that I'll close that portion of the hearing, that concludes the public discussion. I will now open it up for discussion among the board members. Board members.
Well, I, I think the attorney in this case has built a sound argument based off of legal case study. So whether it's, you know, approved or denied tonight, I, you know, I think that, going by that logic, we'd, we'd see it again.
I would agree. Say that again?
I think the attorney's built a sound case based off of legal case study. So whether it's approved or denied tonight, I think this would be before us if it was denied, you know, coming back from, you know, if it was contested, based off of legal case study.
Well, it may be contested. I don't know if it'll ever come back before us, but it depends upon how.
Depending, depending.
Can I just ask a question, Mr. Chair? Tonight, when a motion is made, will be voting in favor to overturn the building inspector's decision, yea, or nay, not to, correct?
All right, I was going to explain that, and I want to make sure everybody fully understands what the vote is. A yes vote will determine that the property is a buildable lot. That will overturn the building inspector's decision. So you want to place yourself in the position of the petitioner that's before us. A yes vote, we agree with the petitioner. A no vote, you would agree with the building inspector. That's how the vote will go. And I'll repeat that again.
Now, in my personal opinion, like, this lot here would be a shame to be wasted on this rundown garage, and similar to many of the other lots of the property there. I don't know, I just think it'd be a shame just to waste it on the garage.
And I would agree with Mr. Lanis, but I think even the deeper point of this is the fact that there is a case study that clearly, not just what Attorney Burke sent us, I went back and researched this on my own, and it is very clear what that determination was, and then doubled down on by the appeals court. I think we are in no position to undermine what the court said, and then the appeals court on top of it. I just don't see where, as the zoning board of appeals, I mean, I think this has been, this has now been set and cast in stone.
Well, I think what we heard from the state representative was probably true, in that over the years, things have gone back and forth relative to these. And we now have the luxury, so as to speak, as numerous court decisions that have kind of laid out a, a path, if you will, to look at what is before us tonight. And I would also say that a lot of these cases that come before us, they're all pretty unique. There's something unique, and that's why they come to this board. So you can't sit here and say everyone is identically the same, because they're not. I have done some extensive research on this also, and it would appear to me that when you look at 40A, it is a little bit more stringent than our Section 27. And I think in the court's decision, they referenced that, that there was more leniency that was given in the Brokton code relative to the state building code. In one sentence, there is an opinion of the court that if there is something on that lot that is not habitable, it really doesn't make the lot unusable. I can understand the building inspector's theory, that if you put a garage on the adjacent lot, and you could say that that lot is used in conjunction with the lot that the house is on. That is a theory, but I don't know if really that is what the law is. So in this case, we've had the Carrera case, where there was separate mets and bounds for the various lots, and it specifically determined what the lot was, what size it was. And the law also says that if there is no other lot next to this that could be merged to make it more conforming, to conform to our zoning, then the lot pretty much stands by itself. And if you flip it 180 degrees, the way I see it, if I look at the Jones case, where we had three separate lots on an old plan, that were laid out in a deed with mets and bounds that included all three lots. The court's rule that you had one lot, not three lots. In this case, there's deeds that describe each individual lot. So I guess the decision we have to make tonight is, is that garage an impediment to making this lot buildable? So if you've done your research, and you've looked into the court cases, you can make an informed decision. So what we will be voting on will be whether or not that is a standalone grandfathered lot that can be built on. And your decision should be based upon, not emotions, but certainly on what we know as law. So once again, before somebody makes a motion, I would ask the board to put yourself in the position of the petitioner. That petitioner is asking us to grant that lot, or make a determination that that lot is a buildable lot. If we make that decision, we will in fact be overturning the decision of the building inspector. So a yes vote says that that lot is a buildable lot. A no vote says that you support the decision of the building inspector, that it is not a buildable lot.
Motion to grant.
Everybody understand that?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made in second to grant. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Lanis?
Yes.
Chief Nadelli?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Greenberry?
Yes.
Mr., Chair Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, that's five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
The vote is five in the affirmative, none in the negative. The building inspector's determination is overturned.
A petition of Vincente's Property LLC, 689 Main Street, Brokton, asks for a variance to seek relief from Section 2710, Table 2, to expand its existing supermarket to provide storage in a C2 zone located near 160 Pleasant Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board, with your permission, Attorney Jim Burke?
I'm going to interrupt you for one second, Attorney Burke. Under 2425, 160 Pleasant Street, the project has already passed through site plan review and was approved by the planning board at the May 24 meeting.
I have the pleasure of representing the Barbosa family and Vincente's Market. This is a good news story for the city of Brokton. I don't, there's any question about that. This is one of a growing number of supermarkets, Roxbury Two in Brokton, and one is it Fall River in Ubedfit? Ubedfit. And basically, it was started by, with the intent to provide Cape Verdean food stops that were not available in, in America by Mr. Barbosa's dad. And the original store was up in North Main Street. This, we, you will all recall, was a kind of a bacon, egg structure that wasn't going anywhere until this utilization came in. What they're looking for is authority to get a 3,880 square foot storage facility attached to the supermarket. The demand has been so great at, at the market, and if you go by there almost any time of day, the lot is full, that they have, and, and again, a good news story for Brokton. They employ 150 people at this store. They service 20,000 customers per week at this store. And basically, they require the storage in order to provide the materials for stocking for the floor. They have, and you'll see it in, in the design that you have, they have some docks to the rear. It's gotten so bad that they have used the docks for storage for the store, which is totally inappropriate. It's to the point where they've had to close one of the docks entirely, and they're only using one of the two docks for bringing in products for the store. This is a unique piece of property. This is a unique structure. It's unique in the sense that it's a C2 zone with adjacent residential next to it. The reason we're here is because if it were just the C2, it wouldn't need a request for variance, but because it borders on a residential zone, the, it, there's a requirement that there be a 20-foot setback, and we encroach in that 20-foot setback in order to make the building work. The, we've got a design there, it will be a block building. However, in order to accommodate the, the residential zone on the west side, the builder's more than happy to either put in architectural block or brick in a facade on that west wall, so it would be a very, a much more attractive use in terms of the adjacent residential structure. So I guess the, the issue is, it is because there's a hardship issue, because it's a request for variance, that it is a unique existing structure on a piece of property that does not have the ability to make an expansion with the needs. So it can't utilize the area for a proper expansion to fit its needs, which would be appropriate in a C2 zone. appropriate in a C2 zone. It would be the, I guess, I guess it would basically, that it is in harmony with the entire neighborhood, because the way they have built and run the store, we will make some corrections in the back now, where we're all able to, to clear up some of the material in the rear that has been there for storage. But it is in fact, the size of the property, the unique structure in the property, the fact that it is an appropriate use under the zoning, and the inability to expand, which is essential for the survival of the business. And I think that's the hardships that we've touched on. So I think that if there are any other specific questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. But as I said, there isn't anything about this that isn't a good news story for the city of Brockton.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yep.
So this business is about to be the recipient of, in a butter of a brand-new street, the two-way on Warren Avenue. On that intersection, does the property, does the, I was going to say climate, does the owner own up until the intersection there?
Yeah.
Okay. Would it be unreasonable to maybe put some plantings when that street is completed to kind of beautify that corner? If this was, it doesn't necessarily have to be a stipulation, but would that be something that the business owner would be willing to do, considering there's going to be a brand-new street?
Yeah, it's part of the site plan approval that the chairman referenced about a year ago. We do have new plantings along Green Street.
Okay.
We really don't have that much room on Warren Ave, on our own property. We only have about a two-foot grass strip between the end of our parking and the property line, in the back of sidewalk. So there's really not much of an opportunity for us to put anything there.
So I forgot, you were approved to expand that, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
So as I said, a little bit right along Green Street. We could certainly, you know, add one or two right at the very corner, but...
Whatever you do, it's fantastic. Yeah, I think it goes a long way, you know?
For sure. And I don't know if you can see it from there, but all these red trees are additional trees that were requested by the planning board as part of the site plan approval. So there are a whole bunch of new plantings that will go on with this expansion.
Right. And I had forgotten you previously approved for that, so.
Thank you.
Real quick, it looks like that new section's going to be fenced in.
Yes.
Is that different than any of the fencing they have out there now?
I would assume it will be the same, chief.
Okay. And gates operational, are there going to be gates, probably locked at certain times of the day? I just asked that someone put, let them know, like, make sure they have enough chain on there so we can get it cut and open if we need to get in there. All right. That's all I have.
Thank you.
So when I went over and took a look at this place, I was going to suggest that between the R3 and the C2, we do some plantings. But with the trees that are currently there, there's absolutely no way you can do any plantings. I think if you did something with that wall, like you explained, I think that would certainly make that side of the building look a lot better to the R3 side of the building. If we try to plant anything on that side, it's never going to survive. It won't do it. Are you going to expand, and this is just a question that really doesn't have much to do with the addition, but expand the parking in the current parking lot at Pleasant and Glenwood and Pleasant and Warren Ave?
Yes, as part of the original site plan, I'm going to say 2015, there was a couple of outposts, the corner at Glenwood, as you said, in the corner at Warren Ave, in the hope was to have a couple of outbuildings, not knowing how good the business was going to be at Vicente's. Since then, that site plan approval that you referenced in May, really the bigger part of that was the construction of those new parking areas. So the plan is to build, where you have those grass areas now, that will become new parking areas as well. So the warehouse addition is a small part of the bigger project.
This afternoon, that parking lot was absolutely full of cars.
Always.
Must do a huge business there, so that extra parking probably is going to help the issue.
Yeah, it'll get us up to almost 300 spaces.
Yeah. And I agree with my fellow board member here that this is a very important corner in welcome to Brockton, and I would hope that we're going to see some things done on that corner that would make it look more than just as barren as it has looked. And I realize there's a whole year of construction going on here, but down the road somewhere, I would hope that the owner of this property does something to kind of make that look a lot nicer.
And I think one thing with the planning board's new regulations on site plan approvals, there's a little bit more teeth to requiring that the owners do what we show on the plans, where previously, there wasn't really an as-built procedure. So right now, we're showing all these plantings. There's more teeth that the planning board has now, that those plantings have to be installed.
Well, I guess my point is if the planning board misses it, the zoning board won't.
Good.
All right. So you're telling us that on the west wall of the new addition, you're going to do some type of a wall that is more pleasing than just a basic cinder block wall?
We'll go to the architect, neither, you know, an architectural block or brick facade.
I think that's a great idea. All right. Board members, any other questions?
One last question, maybe you mentioned it and I missed it, but on that addition, on the fence that abuts your neighbors, is that a transparent fence? Is that a metal? I didn't go back behind there, so what is the fencing situation?
I believe it's a chain link fence.
Yeah, it's all chiseled.
Okay. Would that be reasonable to add privacy slats in the chain link so that if you're operating closer to the property, that maybe as a buffer, since there's no room for plantings?
Certainly.
Not a problem.
Okay, maybe we could make that a stipulation.
Well, I would say that's a suggestion, but if they're going to do extensive fence work out there, they're going to have to take all those trees down. And honestly, I think we're better off to leave the trees and let them do the best they can with chain link fence. And I think instead of like a privacy fence or plantings, if they do something with the wall, to me, that would be a good trade-off.
Okay, yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, I think so. All right, any other questions from board members? Everybody's good? All right, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing. I will now open it up for public discussion. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? I have one letter that has come in from a gentleman, Lori Conde, lives at 19 Highland Street. His property backs up to Green Street, which backs up directly to this addition, and he was very much in favor of the addition and the cleaning up of the back on Green Street. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there any elected official that wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone that has a question on the testimony that has been given tonight? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. That concludes the public discussion. I'll now open it up for discussion among the board members. Board members?
I think Vicente's has been a real strong business owner in the city of Brockton. They've always, whether it be their property down at Campello or this one, they run a clean operation, they run a very busy business. And I think for them to be able to continue to operate, I really believe that the city has to help and be there for them so they can stay in operation where they are and give them that space to be able to expand. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I would agree. Aside from it being an outstanding business and great for the community, that part aside, I also think that it's crucial for their operation to have that expansion to operate appropriately for the size of the community. And obviously, talk about the parking lot, but we're talking about customers and how many people they serve. So I think this is a vital piece that does not infringe in any way that I can see on the neighboring community. So I would be in favor.
I'll make a motion to grant.
Second.
On the motion, I would just like to say I hope that the petitioner pays attention to the discussion that we had relative to the landscaping of that lot and how it is such an important welcome-to-Brockton intersection. I just hope that, that's not part of our decision, but just, I'd like to get it out there. Motion has been made and seconded to grant. All those, yeah, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Delano.
Yes.
Chief Nadelli.
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney.
Yes.
Ms. Greenberry.
Yes.
Chair Gallagher.
Yes.
Chair, five in affirmative, zero in the negative.
The vote is five in the affirmative, none in the negative. The petition is granted.
Good luck.
The next petition is 2525, the petition of GR Development LLC, care of James Burke, 48 North Pearl Street, Brockton, ask for a special permit seeking relief from Section 2729 to construct and operate a car wash in a C2 zone located at 985 Belmont Street.
Again, members of the zoning board of appeals, and Mr. Chairman, Attorney Jim Burke, and I have the pleasure of representing GR LLC. The outfit goes under the trade name Washville Car Wash, and they're a very successful and growing business. They have 23 sites in the Northeast. They have nine now currently in Massachusetts, and Brockton would make 10. They are a well-respected outfit. They are generally very intent on reminding the zoning board of appeals that they have a strong community commitment to any community that they choose to go into or allowed to go into, that includes supporting charitable events, funding for meals and needs of lower-income people in need, and they want to integrate themselves as a viable member of the community. With this, 985 Belmont Street was the Avon Auto Brokers, and it's been operating out of there. I think it's an ideal location for a car wash. Specifically, the design is such that the entire entrance of the site will be from Coolidge Street, the Coolidge Street access, and then will integrate into the existing facility, which allows for a couple of things. There's just an unlimited supply of queuing, basically, within the site. There is substantial parking on the site. The facility is fully automated. It will shut down at the end of the business day. They have, of course, night sky interior lights that basically will protect the area. The design, which is something that's coming into play, they use it regularly, there's mufflers on their vacuums, which make a significant impact on facilities. This, however, is not even close to a residential area, so, I mean, the impact is to FedEx and Eversource and the general community surrounding it. So with the layout, with its access and ready access to 24, again, Belmont Street's brand-new. The city and state put a lot of money into it. When you improve those conditions, it actually requires needed services. Car washes are very well-received in communities. They are generally not identified as a destination observation. Generally, somebody's on the road, takes a look, and says, "I'm going to get my car cleaned." We did have a very thorough study done for a traffic analysis, and it's not a big surprise. The impact, they said, is virtually negligible, and the design of Belmont Street, as it's been improved, can at least handle the build-out through 2032, which basically means there is no impact from this specific utilization. With Scott Barry's suggestion, I think they made a great determination. There are two curb cuts right in the front where Avon is. We're going to close out the curb cut that's closer to Coolidge Street. And basically, the curb cut on the easterly side will be for exit only. So basically, the entire flow is off Coolidge Street. And you can also circulate around and come back out Coolidge Street. But for those who want to take a right-hand turn, it might be easier to come out that area and take a quick right rather than fighting the traffic. Well-designed, the layout is great, the hours are generally 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., seven days a week. They have staff at all times while they're operational. Generally, there are at least three people on-site. During busy periods, they have up to five people on-site. I think it's a good blend for the area. And I think it's something that homeowners, citizens of the Brockton will make good utilization out of. And again, because it is a special permit, not a variance, basically, the standard you're looking for is it in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood and will provide any significant detriment to the surrounding area. And I think on all counts, it's, you know, it'll fit right in there when it's built, and there won't be any negligent impact on the area. So Scott, if you want to go over the plan, I know I've stolen your thunder some, but go ahead.
Really, the biggest thing to go over, as Attorney Burke said, the two existing curb cuts on Belmont Street will close down the one closest to Coolidge. The existing one will be a right turn exit only. And really, that's essentially a bypass lane. As you come off of Coolidge, there's three pay stations, so there'll be three lanes for the cars. There's a bypass lane just in case you forgot your wallet and need to get home. Essentially, that bypass lane, those folks could use that right turn lane. But typically, the people that are getting a car wash pay at the pay stations, go through the tunnel first, get the car wash, and then enter into the vacuum area, vacuum the cars. They would back out and head back out onto Coolidge Street. So we don't see a big amount of traffic coming out onto Belmont Street at all. As Attorney Burke said, it's an existing site. It's been built up for quite some time. We anticipate using the existing drainage system that's out there. There's a series of catch basins, manholes, and a detention pond that's constructed and working properly, so we'll maintain that as we go through the conservation approval and planning board process. That's about it.
Mr. Chair, if I could? I know you can't, you know, lawfully put a right turn only, but would it make sense to suggest that? I just think, you know, the plan looks good, but trying to make a left at that point...
Oh, it's intended to be a right turn exit only.
Only, okay.
Yes, yep.
Perfect.
Yeah, you'll never get across.
A massive...
No way. Yes, agreed.
You guys said you did a traffic study. How many cars do you expect a day or in a 24-hour period?
Jim?
Good evening. Jim Waterman, Secretary of Vice President, Washville.
What's your name again, please?
Jim Waterman.
Jim.
Yep. To answer your question, it varies, obviously, with a lot of seasonality to our business. We see a maximum number of trips just under 1,000 on a busy day, and we average somewhere around 400 to 500.
So how did, where did you, what did you base the traffic study numbers off of then?
We base it off of our internal data that we provided MDM, as well as empirical data from, yeah, what was the, it's, yeah, from our car washes, then there's another data source that the MDM...
Ashtel.
Yeah.
Do you have the traffic codes? They provided traffic codes. Did you get them?
I did, I did. I'm just, I'm basing, like, I guess my thing is you're given a variable number from 500 to 1,000.
Right.
But, I guess that's, how do they work, I guess my question is more of how do they work a traffic study with such a wide swing?
If I can try, because we've been through this before. There is a basic fundamental industry standard, Ashtel, and basically, they establish what the appropriate number of trips is irrespective of what the individual use is. That's the industry standard, and generally, they base it on the industry standard.
Okay. But we took it a step further, and that's what I want to reiterate, is we took empirical data from three operating locations, and we took it during our busiest month for those locations, and we found our data, which is accurate, which shows the number of trips onto our properties at that time. We gave that to MDM as part of the study, and then empirical data shows we're actually under what the industry standard is currently.
What were those locations you used?
We used Concord, New Hampshire, Tinsborough, Massachusetts, and Methuen, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you just explain quickly the landscaping that we might see there? I see green, but I don't think that's all grass.
Right. We do have landscaping across the front on Belmont Street, and a... and a little bit down on Coolidge Street. Not as much on Coolidge Street, just so it won't affect any sightlines coming out of Coolidge Street. But a lot of landscaping proposed along Belmont Street.
I would think whatever's along Belmont Street needs to be low.
Yep, exactly, for the same reason.
So the reason I ask the question is on Coolidge. Across Coolidge now, you got the Father Bill's operation over there?
Correct.
Just for a subject for conversation, for noise on your property, would it make sense to have some type of vegetation somewhere along there to kind of quiet the noise from the vacuums?
We certainly can, yes.
Yeah, I think it would be something that you should look at.
Sure.
One thing, though, the design is very specific. The noise is to channel out of Belmont Street, not Father Bill's. Because you have the turbine, vacuum, whatever.
The dryers.
The dryers, they pull out the dumbbells.
So the plan is to bother the veterans at the VA versus the people who live at Meigs, Father Bill's? I'm just, I mean, I think that's an accurate question, if that's where we're going with this.
Well, anyway, I think you've answered my question that the sound is towards Belmont Street, not towards Coolidge. I just want to just be aware of the fact that now we got almost like residential across the street. It's commercial. I mean, this has no, there's not a problem here with the C2. But I just think to be good neighbors, that might be something you'd want to keep in mind.
We can certainly add it as part of the site plan package.
I think so, because even if it's not the vacuums, if you got 500 cars a day, people playing music sometime, I think a buffer, Mr. Chair makes a very good point.
Understood.
And lastly, on the hours, we will set the hours from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., seven days a week. You're okay with that?
That's the request, yes.
That wants to be changed, you've got to come back before us again?
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, so that's okay, that's seven to eight?
Yes.
Okay, good. Board members, any other questions? Good? Okay, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is anyone here who wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there any elected official that wants to be heard on the issue?
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Councilman Nocchalo, this is actually his ward. I spoke to him earlier tonight. He's in full support of this project. Ward 3 abuts this project, actually, the other side of Belmont Street. And I think this will be a very good project for the area. I think some of the suggestions made by the chairman, some of your board members, to make the quality of life with the noise, I think the owners are very amenable to buying into that. I think it'll be a good project, and I think it's good for the city. And again, anything that's going to further development in the city, I'm always for. As long as it's a good project, it's not going to adversely affect the neighborhood. And again, I see no detriment at all to it. So I encourage you all to vote affirmative or反对. Thank you again, Board members. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there any other elected official who wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone in the room that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given tonight? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. That concludes the public discussion. I'll now open it up for Board members.
I like how it utilizes that traffic light, you know, and they benefit from the upgrade, the recent upgrade that Mastott did to Belmont Street. So it can definitely handle the traffic and more on that street, for that matter. But to Chief's point, I guess the VA is lucky that they're so far setback. If they were closer, that would be a major concern. But I would be in favor of this.
Yeah, we had other car washes come, you know, for Belmont Street, but I think this is a perfect location. I think this one works well.
I like the location where it's going to come in and out at a traffic-controlled intersection. Belmont Street, right now, probably the average speed is 45 miles an hour since they rebuilt it. And if you try to pull out and go across traffic, it is very difficult. So I think anything that goes there that takes use of that traffic signal is certainly a benefit, so. And it is allowed with a special permit, so. Motion to grant.
Second.
Motion is made, second, to grant the special permit with the hours that they have requested. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Linas?
Yes.
Chief Nadelli?
No.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Greenberry?
Yes.
Chair Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, that's four in the affirmative, one in the negative.
Vote is four in the affirmative, one in the negative. The petition is granted. The next petition, 2526, the petition of Panakin Patel, 1145 West Chestnut Street, for a variance seeking relief from Article 4, Section 2733, requesting a mixed-use-for-residential housing, SROs, of 10 units in an I-1 Zone located at 1145 West Chestnut Street. Now, just before you begin, there was a scriven as error on the application and the publication where we referenced Article 4, Section 1233, and it should have been 2733. So it's a scriven as error, it's not going to affect that part. Secondly, we have received communication that 1145 West Chestnut Street, if approved, the project would be required to pass through site plan review. All yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Jake Creedon, 71 Legion Parkway, Brockton. Members of the zoning board, I can tell you that the request that we're making this evening, obviously, is probably not shocking to you, but it's unique, it's novel, and it's kind of courageous. In all of my 55 years being before the zoning board in the city here, I think perhaps only the chairman has seen any situation where there might be a request to have residential in what overall is an industrial-commercial zone. Of course, that gets right to the hardship. It's obviously a second floor in a structure that was built in 2002 that has been vacant now for almost two years to the owner, Mr. Patel. It does not have the possibility, we don't think, any further of anybody going in there. For years, for the last few years, of course, there was a mediation firm in there, and they found that they had better situation to move their operation. The neighborhood itself, I'm sure all of you are familiar with West Chestnut Street at that westerly end. It already contains restaurants, liquor store, which, incidentally, he is the landlord of the liquor store. Sweeney's there, no relation. The many, many retail situations, a bakery, the large towing company, which gets into industrial things, large truck sales, which now Kenwood, a couple of single-family houses more easterly, a medical facility on the corner, the dental facility, White's Bakery, construction and landscape companies, a pet boarding place, and an injuring firm. So again, this is rather courageous. It's, I would suggest to you that I was fortunate enough to be hired over the years to put in the first self-service gas stations. You wouldn't believe the amount of pushback we had back then, that nobody wanted a self-service thing because they were dangerous, there were fire hazards associated with you, and it turns out to be not true. You'd have to drive a long time in Brockton to find somebody to fill up your gas tank. Secondly, I did most of the digital signs along the highway and whatever. The one specifically that gets in my mind is the one on the top of Cary Hill, where we probably had 150 people objecting to putting in the first cell tower because it was going to interfere with their TVs and all of the other things. Obviously, that didn't happen. The, what happened after that, once that went in, so many co-location people wanted to get on those towers because everybody had a cellphone. So I'd ask you to keep your mind open on this courageous, I think, unique request that we put in a rental of college age from Stone Hill and Bridgewater, and perhaps Massasoit. I have been in touch with the directors of residence in those places recently and asked them if there is still a demand for off-campus housing, and both said resoundingly, there is. There is a unique situation with Mr. Patel because his network is of the Indian descent, and he's told me he could fill those 10 spaces, those 10 units, with Indian families that have already contacted him that want housing for their students, a lot of whom would be a couple of brothers, you know, a senior and a, I mean, a freshman and a junior, and people like that. I would suggest the uses that are there, a residential with a couple of houses, a few, many houses down the street, wouldn't be detrimental to the actual building where this is. Safety-wise, we have a wide entrance that comes in and you exit out, "Do not enter" sign, or the other situation. So from the traffic point of view, I don't think there's any detriment there, and it's in harmony with everything else that's happening in that area. There's no question, at peak hours, in the morning and night, there's a lot of traffic on West Chestnut Street. But I don't think 10 cars that might access the building for residential purposes, like a dorm or a frat house, would in any way be negative, a negative impact to that location. The very good points about the structure itself is that it is already fully sprinkled, fully sprinkled. It has, because it's a fairly modern building, it has beautiful access, and I think you probably have a copy of the floor plans that we sent in, that shows that the exits to get out, should there be any kind of a hazard, a fire hazard stuff, are very clear. Mr. Patel has also offered to put in those red digital exits to get out if this variance is allowed. It has been vacant for almost two years. He's tried numerous times to get any kind of commercial tenant in there. As you know, downstairs is the Little Sammy's Restaurant, which operates significantly every day. And the other one is his own liquor store under another corporation. The family is present on property, another positive point. All the time, the businesses are open. I think that's a real plus. The residential use would be, according to Mr. Patel and the school, would be males-only. I'm convinced that that's allowable. It's not discriminatory. It's a school situation, and I think it's very, very, makes a lot of sense, especially given the fact that their religion, Mr. Patel has told me, doesn't allow drinking. Now, you know, they don't drink, and there's a lot of other things they don't do because of their religion. So I don't think there would be a detrimental gender use of that property. It's going to have a, well, Scott would tell you, we're going to have a, we would like to have a kitchen there. Each of the rooms are pretty good size, if you've seen the floor space situation. They're a minimum of, I think, 14 by 10, and some of the other ones are 14 by 28. So they're very much like a dormitory room. They would be like a dormitory room. The kitchen would be, by code, of course, and the co-owner here and contractor has convinced me that there's no problem doing a central kitchen there with the required suppression, fire suppression and hood through the ceiling. There are, the lighting in the parking lot, it's been there for, well, since 2002, and is very adequate. Scott will tell you when he gives you a little bit on the site plan, the parking plan. There's more than, if you ever go by there, there's no parking use that anybody uses out back. The 10 cars that might be there, not more than 10, of course, but if there's, you know, brothers, it might be seven or eight. But I can tell you that that back parking lot would easily accommodate the few 10 cars that could be there. And again, it certainly wouldn't negatively impact any usage traffic-wise on West Chestnut Street. Scott, would you just give us the site review plan showing that on the hardship situations, that it is a uniquely shaped situation? I believe most of that soil was part of the 1938 hurricane debris, so there's one of those issues. And I think the most major hardship situation is that this structure exists, and there's no way to put an industrial use in that building. That itself has already been determined by this board, apparently, letting in the two businesses. So that's, Scott, would you just give us a background on that?
As Attorney Creedon said, there's two existing entrances, curb cuts off of West Chestnut Street, a one-way entrance and a one-way exit. The site itself, being relatively new, went through site plan approval, has an existing drainage system to handle the parking lot runoff. There are 48 parking spaces on-site. So there's plenty of spaces, both for the existing uses and the additional 10 residential units. As the chairman read, we expect to go through site plan approval upon approval tonight.
There is also, Scott, you could locate for them, there is a hydrant right smack on the edge of the property.
Right here.
For, again, for fire purposes and safety purposes. There is a very new, active, approved elevator. There are wide, beautiful stairs, having both entrances and exits, two different ones away from each other. So depending on where and if there were a hazard situation, there would be an easy exit. That's basically the presentation. Of course, anything we were to do would have to go through site plan, and it would also have to be approved. All of the things that the structure would have to do would have to be approved under the building code. It's now set up. The walls and petitions were far, again, the mediation boys. So they're all single rooms right now. So it wouldn't be a major, major change in structural situations, and none of them would be structural carrying beams or anything. The interior will house two full bathrooms with showers, sinks, and toilets. That's basically what I can tell you.
Very good. So if I could just, real quick, so is the plan, then, to gut the entire second floor, to put in the rooms? Because obviously, it's probably not going to line up accurately as it is now with how the rooms will be laid out.
I would say, Chief, there are minor wall separations that would take place, but many of the rooms are just set up just right for the size of a dorm room.
The main hallways will remain.
Okay.
Really, if the individual offices that pretty much hit the right size, then you would look forward to this particular use. For the common area in the middle, that would become the common kitchen.
Okay. The reason I ask is because, obviously, if we start moving walls and the sprinklers become a problem, and you've got to adhere to 13R versus what you're doing now. So it's a little bit, it's going to be a little bit different, but okay. So basically, what you're looking at, a single-room apartment is like a rooming house with a kitchen, a common kitchen, common baths.
Right.
Above.
And we have on the plan a common room, telephone, and computers for the kids.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could, so maybe I'm just not, you said this is kind of attached to or kind of guided towards a student, right?
Yes.
Is there any deal in place with... Is there any deal in place with the college? Is there any communication at this point?
No, only that there is a big demand, like there is for regular housing everywhere, far, off-campus, because they don't have enough dorms in either of those places to house the enrollments that are getting bigger and bigger.
Okay. And maybe I'm just not so familiar with outside of the college campus. Are there any other buildings that are servicing as housing for that college in Brockton?
No, but I believe, based on what I've seen at Massasoit and their growth, there'll be also courses and stuff like that where off-campus people from maybe Cape Cod or somewhere like that would want to rent one of those units. But again, Mr. Patel has a whole stable full of parents that want to have their kids live in this place already.
All right. So everything's basically at the college, contained inside the campus?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And I guess my last question would be, you obviously saw a higher demand in this than traditional housing?
Well, to be honest with you, I suggested to them, because this is what they wanted because they had that network and feeder system, I said, the only other thing, if that fails, you'd have to come back in and try to get, you know, a multi-family use. It certainly can't be an ADU because there's no residents tied to it, but it would be that type of concept.
So you'd have a lot of turnover, I guess, essentially, possibly every semester, depending?
I would say so, but, you know, I'm familiar with Stonehill because I'm on the board. There are sports teams and other things that are there 10 or 11 months. So I would think there might be a sub-rental of the athletes that have to be there through August, and the other ones that come in that have to start the new next programs. So I think there'd be no vacancy, if you will.
Would this be something that would be, would have a property management piece, or would the owner be?
Well, the family is always on-premise because they technically own the liquor store, and they, obviously, one of their other good tenants is Little Sammy's. And so Little Sammy's is open until, I think, at least nine, so there, and this liquor store is open until, what time? Until 10:00? So the family will always be there.
That would be the onsite.
That would be the onsite management. And I know it's novel and creative, but I think it, like, like the digital signs and the self-service gas, it ought to be given a chance. If it fails, it'll fail on its own.
Board members, you all set? Any other questions? Close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there any elected official who wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, I'll close the portion of the hearing. Is there anyone in the room that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. That concludes the public discussion. I will now open it up for deliberation among the board members. Board members.
Well, I know it's kind of a, it would be a leap of faith, but I don't, I don't know if there's a market for this, and I don't know if it would turn into something that, you know, wasn't presented. I just don't know. The college market, we don't know if it's proven yet, and I think they've agreed to that by kind of a leap of faith type of case for it, but...
I'm kind of confused as to what we would be approving. Are we approving that these are college dormitories?
And here you are.
I said, I'm kind of confused as to what we're approving for this to be used as college dormitories only.
No. He has suggested that they could do that, but what's before us tonight is single-room occupancies.
So like a rooming house?
That's how I see it. Anybody could go in there. He's offering the ability to have college students in there, or he's also offering the ability to have family members in there. And he also says it's going to be all males. There'll be no females in there. So when we approved the industrial park many, many years ago, I'm going back 30 years, that there was a need for certain things to support the employees of the industrial park. We allowed some stores to go in there that would service the employees of the industrial park. We also decided that retail stores could be there, based upon whatever they're selling in the retail store is manufactured on the site, like White's Bakery, for example. But the flavor of that whole area up there is commercial industrial, with tendency towards industrial. There was never any thought of residential going into this area. I'm concerned that if we open this up for residential, we're going to get other places in that industrial park that are going to tell us that they cannot make a go of their location, and they would like to convert that into housing. I think, in my position, the industrial park is the industrial park. It's our commercial center of the city. It is never, was never designed to be turned into housing, rooming houses, or whatever you want to call it. Whatever goes up in that area up there has to be related to some industry or commercial use. And if you look around, you'll see just about everything up there falls into that category. I don't see how we can possibly control who or what is going to go into this location. I think what he says about college students, there is no agreement with any college to put their kids in there. I'm just concerned it's going to be a rooming house. And in my opinion, a rooming house of this type does not belong in the industrial park. We've got to be careful we don't erode the industrial park.
Not to mention what will be there after they sell the building, once we...
Well, you know, even when we get into the marijuana up there, we discovered that the marijuana had to be so many feet from a residential area. If this was allowed to be residential, down the road, whatever comes along, could be totally banned from our industrial park because we got residential in there. So I think, in my mind, when I vote on this, I am voting to preserve the sanctity of our industrial park, our industrial park, commercial and residential. There's a lot of areas in the city where we could do residential. When we voted to allow this to go in, probably, I don't know, how many years ago, 20 years ago or more, the intent was to allow some commercial on the first floor with offices up on the second floor. That was how it was written up. So right now, if somebody wanted to open up an office up on the second floor, they could. But what he's asking for tonight, which is residential, is another whole thing. So you heard its variance, you've heard its hardship. What else? I'm opening up for discussion.
Is this deliberation, by the way?
Yes.
We're deliberating.
Okay. I totally agree with you, chief. I may be more susceptible to kind of see it if it was permanent housing. I may, I go, but as far as what was presented, I, I don't think I could possibly...
Make a motion to grant.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to grant. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Delinas?
No.
Chief Nadelly?
No.
Mr. Sweeney?
No.
Ms. Greenberry?
No.
Chair Gallego?
No.
Mr. Chair, that's zero affirmative, five in the negative.
The vote is zero, and the affirmative, five in the negative. The petition is denied.
Thank you, members of the board.
Can we take a rest, please?
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. I'm going to reconvene in the meeting of the zoning board. The next case that is before us is case number 2527, petition of Eric Grassa, care of James Burke, 48 North Pearl Street, Brockton, asks for a variance, seeking relief from Section 27-9, Table 1, to construct a single-family home on a lot lacking area and frontage in an R1C zone located at 76 Carol Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, with your permission, I'm Attorney Jim Burke with offices at 48 North Pearl Street, and I have the pleasure of representing Eric Graca, who's right here. Eric is employed by Harbor One. He's also in the development business, and he has this piece of property at 76 Carol Avenue under agreement from the Mallett family. It, in fact, has been owned for a number of years by the Malletts. By history, the property was part of a major master plan in 1925. So it was, and remains to this date, divided into separate lots. The issue from the perspective of 2712 that we talked about earlier is that post-1967, there was a merger of wrong term, but there was a deed prepared in which the deposits were not separated but intertwined. The net result was a request for buildability determination was made with the Building Department. It was denied, and no appeal was taken. As a result, we're here today seeking a variance, hopefully with your permission to be allowed to construct two single-family homes lacking in frontage and lacking in area and meeting the other setback requirements from Scott Barry as planned. Roughly, the lots will be approximately 8,000 square feet with 70 feet of frontage the same. We have provided for you a plans of what the housing would be. It would be a really great, I think, addition to the local community there, which is a great street. Carol Avenue always has been. And these are really nice homes. They're roughly 2,200, 2,300 square feet, not including a two-car garage, and it is designed for bringing and raising a family. The uniqueness, I think, is, in terms of the hardship issue, virtually all of the houses on Carol Avenue have frontages from 70, from 52 to 72 feet. Basically, that, this is consistent with the entire neighborhood. In fact, I think in my notes, I think I saw that something like eight lots had frontage of less than 70 feet. So this will not be inconsistent with the area. Where I think it creates a kind of a unique hardship is that the intent and purpose of the ordinance was to make these two buildable lots. Through a scribner's error, whoever prepared the deed, it wound up creating a roadblock to the utilization of that. So the net effect is that the only way we can achieve what I think the ordinance intended to achieve by making these two buildable lots is through the variance request. So, Scott, do you want to go ahead and outline the plan?
Sure. As Attorney Burke said, we have 70 feet of frontage, a little more than 120 feet of depth, 8,400 square feet, which is a little bit more. Most of the neighborhood is at 7,200 square feet, so we're a little bit larger than the rest of the neighborhood. It's a four-bedroom home, two-car garage, all four bedrooms up on the second floor. Side setbacks meet the zoning requirements, front and rear yard, decks on the back also meet the zoning setback. Utilities are available on Carol Avenue.
Jesus Christ. So are these, are these actual two-deeded lots with mets and bounds?
Yes.
They are?
Always have been by a plan, and what happened is, around 1983, someone prepared a deed and did a running description, northeast by southeast, that included the entire parcel. It didn't separate the two lots.
And has that been corrected at this point?
Well, it's been, it's not a question of being corrected because the plan is already there. So we don't have to go to the planning board, for example, to separate a plan because the lots are already separated.
So that's, you know what I'm getting at, Attorney Burke?
Yes.
Like, this is, this is the conundrum we run into on a regular basis.
Right.
We can't create lots.
You can't create, this lot is already created.
Okay.
And recorded.
Okay. That's all I have.
Are the utilities for this lot already on the lot? I hope somebody says yes.
I understand the issue.
I just totally rebuilt Carol Avenue.
I know. And whether you do, and I'm trying to remember from when I represented the Brockton Redevelopment Authority, there is a procedure where you can laser burn the roadway to blend it in if you have to put in utilities. It's expensive, but it's something that you can do.
Well, I have reason to believe that the utilities were brought into the sidewalk.
Okay.
I was just, I wanted to confirm that, but...
I believe that's...
Isn't, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not a DPW guy, isn't there some ordinance, though, you can't cut a street?
There's supposed to be a number of years where you can...
Number of years before you can cut a street?
It's a DPW thing.
That's a DPW rule.
But I typically miss stubs off the utilities on the...
Knowing it is, just in case, so they don't have to get into that situation.
The applicant just indicated that there are utility stubs to the lots.
Okay, great. That's great news.
Say that again?
The applicant just indicated that there are utility stubs to the lot, already existing.
Any greenery added to these?
I don't have anything specific, but if you have upscale houses, there'll be...
A tree or two in the front yard?
I'm sure at least one tree in the front yard opposite of the driveway.
Is that in the plans, or? It was approved, could we add it?
So these all have 15 feet setback on each side?
Yes, sir.
33 in the front. What do we got in the back?
45.
45 feet?
Okay. Well, that's okay.
Well, almost 45. Include the deck, it's a little bit less. All right, so the deed has been squared away. It is two separate lots. This has been taxed, assessed separately as separate lots.
Separately, yeah. Yeah, continuously.
Okay. So basically, why we're here tonight is it's an undersized lot based upon our current standards. But you're telling us, and it appears as though these two lots are in conformance with all of the other lots in the neighborhood and...
Very much so.
Somewhat larger, yeah. Anything else you want to ask? Good? I'm going to close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close the portion of the hearing. Is there anyone that, whoops, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Anna Nunes. I live at 57 Carol Ave, right over there in the corner, and this lot has been, I moved there in 2017, and when we first moved in, it was really tall trees, and the owners about five years ago cut it down, so this lot has been abandoned and just overgrown grass. So we would love to see two, two new properties there and just to help bring up the home value in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there any elected official who wants to be heard on the issue?
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, board members. I want to speak in favor of this project. Carol Ave is a very nice neighborhood, and I think these lots being developed would really add to the character of the neighborhood. I had two butters there contact me that had some questions on the development. They both were for father development. This has some questions and concerns about the process of the development. Attorney Burke was nice enough to speak to both of them. They have both gotten back to me, and they are fully comfortable with it. They have both gotten back to me, and they are fully comfortable with it. So I am comfortable with it, and I encourage you all to vote in favor of it. Thank you again, board members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other elected official who wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none in the room, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone in the room that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given? I do have a letter that has come in from a abudder at 71 Carol Avenue, and the concern is, one of them is, the street has just been completely redone, and the neighbors down there put up with a mess for a couple of years while the gas pipes and everything were being replaced, and there is the hope that the street will not have to be open. And it sounds like tonight, we might get lucky and have all the utilities on the lot. There was a concern of the close proximity of the construction to other properties in the street, the traffic in the neighborhood, which will certainly increase, and any parking problems that may come with the new construction, the increase of trash, which undoubtedly happened. It's a very established neighborhood, and the abudders are hopeful that any construction that takes place on this property will be in keeping with the nature of the neighborhood. I think it's important for the developer to hear that. So I don't think this letter is either in favor or against. It is a letter that expresses the feelings of this particular abudder, who is speaking for other abudders, and they are concerned that whatever goes on over there is clean, it's not a mess, we don't cut the street. So that's basically what it amounts to. So I think the developer needs to hear that. All right, is there anyone else that has a question on the testimony that has been given? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. I will now open up the discussion to board members.
I think it's a good project. I think the situation we always run into, and I think Attorney Burke clarified this fact that we're, you know, the lot thing was the issue in the scribner's error, and it's squared away, because we run into that a lot, where we put in a tough spot that we can't create lots. So, but I think, you know, that's a very nice street, and just driving down there, by there, I think Ms. Noons said it best when she stepped up to the microphone about, you know, you never want, I had an empty lot next to me for a number of years, and it's so nice to have a house there now. So I think it'll be better for the neighborhood as a whole.
I'll motion to approve with a stipulation that there's at least one tree planted in the front yard.
I have to apologize. What was the...
Motion to approve with a tree in the front yard.
Wait, what?
A new planted tree in the front yard.
Trees in the front yard?
One, at least one tree.
Okay, so I guess what the board is asking for is to make sure that there's appropriate landscaping in the front of the building?
Yes.
Okay, you're good with that?
I'm good with that, that's fine.
All right, so there's nothing else that we discussed. All right, so a motion has been made and seconded to grant. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Delinas?
Yes.
Chief Nadeli?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Greenberry?
Yes.
Chair Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, that's five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Vote is five in the affirmative, none in the negative. It is granted.
Thank you, folks.
Not yet.
Thank you very much.
Don't go away yet.
You got one more.
Two separate? No?
We got another case coming up here.
Let's get up and see.
We got another case for you.
Say ditto.
All right. Ditto.
That's true. There were two.
Last case of the evening, number 2528, the petitioner Eric Grassa, care of James Burke, 48 North Pearl Street, Brockton, asks for a variance, seeking relief from Section 27-9, Table 1, to construct a single-family home on a lot lacking area and frontage in an R1C zone. This one is located at 82 Carol Avenue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and not to keep the zoning board here longer than need be, but my arguments in favor would be the same as the last petition, and I'd ask that you incorporate that in reference in your decision.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes, please.
Would they be able to do a tree in the front yard for this one as well?
Be happy to do a tree in the front yard.
Thank you.
All right, tree. What kind of tree would you like?
We'll get to know and stipulations.
Charlie Brown tree?
You don't have to answer that question. All right, board members, you all set on discussion?
Yep.
This is very similar to the last one. Okay. I'm going to close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there any elected official who wants to be heard on the issue?
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, board members. My feelings are the same about this lot, and I'm glad that we have an addition to trees on it too, Mr. Sweeney. But again, I encourage you to vote favorably on this. I think it's good for the neighborhood and good for Brockton. Thank you very much, board members. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there any other elected official who wants to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone in the room that has a question relative to the testimony that has been given? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. That concludes the public discussion. I'll now open it up for board member deliberation. Board members.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And on the motion, the same letter that I referenced on the last case would also pertain to this one?
Yes.
Everybody's good with that? Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to grant. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Delinas?
Yes.
Chief Nadeli?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Greenberry?
Yes.
Chair Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, that's five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Vote is five in the affirmative, none in the negative. The petition is granted.
Good luck.
That concludes tonight's... I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Too bad. I hope that they heard me.
We want to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.
I retire.